Okay, very good. There we go. So, good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us on this beautiful Thursday. I know we'd all rather be outside, so I think I was to give us your perspective on Advanced Clean Cars II. Welcome to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections Rules Hearing for the
Can you send it via email?
Program, as well as the miscellaneous revisions to the rules pertaining to
It's no good on WhatsApp. Don't ever send me anyone WhatsApp.
I don't know. There's a lot of background, so I haven't
Put it on your email.
Peg, you're muted.
I spent the last five or 10 minutes trying to send it to myself. I can't do it.
You, can you please mute yourself? We can hear you. Okay. Let's try that again. I guess I should say at the outset then, please mute your phones unless you are called on to speak. So I'm going to start again for the sake of the stenographer. Good morning and welcome to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections Rules Hearing for the Advanced Clean Cars II Program, as well as the miscellaneous revisions to the rules pertaining to low emission vehicles, diesel power, gasoline model year 2027 or later, heavy duty new engine and vehicle standards and requirements, and the Advanced Clean Cars, Advanced Clean Trucks Program. My name is Peg Hannah. I'm the Director of the Division of Climate Change Mitigation and Monitoring, and I will be the Hearing Officer today. Please be advised that this hearing is being recorded. The purpose of today's hearing is to accept comments on the department's proposed new rules at NJAC 7:27-29A and proposed amendments to NJAC 7:27-14-15-28A-29 and -31, as well as NJAC 7:27A-3. Additionally, the department is proposing to include the new rules and amendments as a revision to New Jersey State Implementation Plan, or SIP. Therefore, comments to the proposed SIP revision are being accepted simultaneously. The rule proposal and SIP revision were published in the New Jersey Register on August 21, 2023. We are holding this hearing in accordance with the Federal Clean Air Act, New Jersey's Air Pollution Control Act, and New Jersey's Administrative Procedures Act. This hearing is being held virtually through the department's video conferencing software, Microsoft Teams. A telephone call-in number has also been provided. In addition to publishing the proposed rule in the New Jersey Register on August 21, 2023, the department also provided notice of this hearing and the availability of the proposed rules through its listserv and posting on the department's website. The primary component of this rulemaking is the incorporation by reference of the Advanced Clean Cars II Regulation, also known as ACC2. The department proposes this rulemaking to require manufacturers of passenger cars and light-duty trucks to meet an annual zero-emission vehicle requirement intended to increase the percentage of zero-emission vehicles sold in New Jersey that meet the minimum technical requirements. In addition to the annual zero-emission vehicle requirement, the ACC2 Regulation includes more stringent multi-pollutant exhaust emissions standards that manufacturers of internal combustion engine passenger cars, light-duty trucks, and medium-duty vehicles must meet. The rulemaking also has several other components to clarify and update several subchapters related to motor vehicles, including updated references to an EPA memorandum in NJAC 7:2714 and 7:27-15. Amendments to clarify that there will be a New Jersey-specific averaging banking and trading program in NJAC 7:27-28A, model year 2027 or later, heavy-duty new engine and vehicle standards and requirements. Amendments to specify the exemption of emergency and military tactical vehicles from the requirements of NJAC 7:27-31, Advanced Clean Trucks Program. And amendments to end the applicability of the existing low-emission vehicle program at NJAC 7:27-29 with model year 2025. Finally, the proposed rulemaking includes penalty provisions at NJAC 7:27A for the proposed amendments and new rules, and clarifies the violations for existing rule provisions. The department appreciates all of you taking the time to join today's virtual hearing. Because it is being held virtually, I would like to explain the ground rules for the hearing. As a courtesy to other people testifying, the participants will be muted until they are called upon to testify. When we call you to testify, please unmute yourself by pressing the mic icon on your computer or mobile device. If you're calling in by phone, unmute yourself by pressing pound six. Please do not use the chat box to provide comments. The chat box function is only for procedural or administrative technical questions regarding this hearing. If you have already emailed the department to express your interest in testifying today, we will call your name in the order that you have registered, except that elected officials will be given priority. The list in order of pre-registered speakers has been posted in the chat box. I think the first 10 people has been posted in the chat, and we'll continue to update that as we move through the list. If you have not pre-registered to testify today and would like to present comments, there will be an opportunity to do so after those who have pre-registered have had an opportunity to speak. At that time, I will ask you to please raise your hand by pressing the hand icon on your screen if you are on a computer or mobile device, and we will acknowledge each of you in the order your hand is raised. Again, please do not use the chat box to provide comments. If you're calling in by phone, you will also have an opportunity to identify yourselves and present comments. To unmute yourself on a phone, simply press pound six. Anyone who has not pre-registered and wishes to speak today must provide the department with an email address. You may do so by emailing monica@monica.miranda@dep nj.gov or writing it in the chat. This is not an adversarial proceeding. Attendees who speak will not be sworn in as witnesses, nor will cross-examination be permitted. Please do not interrupt while comments are being presented. To ensure that anyone who wants to speak is given the opportunity, we are asking all speakers to limit their remarks to four minutes. There will be a countdown timer on the screen so that you're aware of the time you have remaining. If you're calling in by phone, we'll give you a verbal reminder of the time remaining. When I call on you, please unmute yourself, state your name, and spell it for the record. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization, company, or interest, please state that as well and spell it for the record. If you have a copy of your prepared written statement, please send a copy to Monica Miranda. I think she just put her email address in the chat. This hearing will continue until all speakers have had an opportunity to present their comments. Should you have insufficient time to present all of your comments, or if you think of additional comments after the close of this hearing, you can submit them in writing to the department through October 20, 2023. I will now call upon those who have indicated that they would like to comment, beginning with our elected officials. Assemblyman Burzicelli, would you please unmute yourself, state your name, spell it for the record, and state the name of the organization, company, or interest that you represent?
Good morning to all. Last name is spelled B as in boy U R Z I C H E L L I. Had the great honor of serving in the General Assembly for 20 years and speak today as a citizen, resident of the borough of Paulsboro, Gloucester County. And Peg, I really appreciate the courtesy of being able to speak early in the proceedings. And I want to offer just a general comment. Having been involved in many, many legislative issues through the years, particularly involving the environment, I've been involved in mandate discussions, some of them that I voted for, some of them that I had objections to. But I always thought the legislative process was a sincere one and worked towards a common goal to make our environment in New Jersey better. Living in the southern part of the state, you know, I'm in the Delaware Valley, which is a containment area, which has often been discussed with regards to exhaust and pollution and what blows in from Pennsylvania. And I'd just like to be part of this public record and say to all of you that, particularly this time of year, I'm in contact with a lot of people, actually knocking on strangers' doors, which is not a pleasant thing to do, an easy thing to do. And I can tell you that the tone of New Jersey residents, when they hear the word mandate, whether it be for the potential of gas stoves in their homes, or in this particular case, how an automobile will be propelled going down the street, is a word that concerns them greatly. And frankly, in this case, and I speak specifically to the thought that we would follow California's model, and if I understand it correctly, 2035 gasoline cars, new cars, would not be sold. Do I have that right? Am I incorrect in that? Is that the thrust here?
I don't know that we can weigh in on that.
Okay, all right. I didn't want to be speaking in the wrong direction and take up your valuable time. But I'll speak as if 2035 would be a trigger year. And I just want to remind this public process that the purchase of an automobile, if you own a home, is the second largest investment you make. If you don't own a home, live in an apartment, or still live at home with your parents, it's the largest investment you make. So there are collateral issues when we speak of mandates. And I understand that at times you can establish a mandate to try to get to a goal, and mandate can be adjusted on the backside. But in this case, with this kind of issue, it can have a chilling effect on decisions people make, including businesses. Now, I live in a town where I'm nestled between two oil refineries. So, and you know, there are places that provide jobs, and there are places that over the years have worked to be a better neighbor in environmental issues. The point is that if there is a mandate coming, capital investments in these places, capital investments in automobile repair shops, small business people will have to make decisions based on what they think is coming, not necessarily what's in front of them. So as this process moves forward, and by the way, for clarification, I live in a household, we have an electric vehicle, which I drive very frequently, we have a gas vehicle, which is driven very frequently as well. That's a choice I made. And to get two more electric vehicles on the road, very laudable. And anyone who's driven one will tell you that they like it very much. But I get back to just a simple point of mandating. There are so many components here that if we're going to say as a state public policy, we're going to mandate by 2035, new gasoline vehicles are not sold, it's going to have a chilling effect in areas that maybe the academic view of this is not taken into consideration. And I think, as I would tell you, I believe strongly that the people that I'm around feel the marketplace should dictate. And I ask people to look back to the early days of motor vehicles. You know, electric cars had a significant portion of the marketplace. They were displaced by gasoline because the technology was better. It was easier to operate, and it could go further. Now, things are changing, and I think the marketplace is changing too. So I do not think the state should be mandating that the motor vehicles sold in the state in 2035 should only be electric vehicles. I think the marketplace will dictate what people will buy as technology gets better, infrastructure charging gets better, and all those things are coming. But if we mandate, the collateral effects of it are not, I don't think thoroughly being discussed at this point. So I asked in this public process and leave my comments this way. Marketplace should dictate. The states make great strides on making the environment better. There are more electric cars on the road today than there were three days ago, and that number will continue to grow. And as we all work together on this, our federal partners are not helping us. Incentives work. That's why I bought my car. And a lot of these incentives, I think, need to come from the federal side to the manufacturer so the prices of electric vehicles can come down and it can be more competitive and more affordable. But I think that this is much different than establishing a mandate on plastic bags. And careful consideration has to be given as to the overall effect of what happens if we're going to mandate this in this process, in this timeframe. And I'd really think, other than the back and forth, which we're not having on this, bottom-line comment is mandates don't work in this case, don't serve the goal we're trying to reach. There's a better way to get to this, and I think, again, the marketplace should be the dictating factor. Thank you, Peg.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Next in the queue is Mayor Stevenson.
Peg, he is not going to be able to speak today, so we can go on to the next person.
Okay. Next in the queue is Isabel Molina.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
So, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bold and important rulemaking. My name is Isabel Molina, spelled I S A B E L M O L I N A, and I am the Environmental Justice Policy Associate with New Jersey LCV. New Jersey LCV works to protect our precious natural
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, all good. And for the sake of time, for the sake of everybody's time, would it be better for me to continue from where I was going?
Why don't you start from the top, just so that we have a clear run there?
Sure thing. Okay, so, again, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bold and important rulemaking. Name is Isabel Molina, spelled I S A B E L M O L I N A, and I'm the Environmental Justice Policy Associate with New Jersey LCV. New Jersey LCV works to protect our precious natural resources, including air, water, and open spaces, no matter your zip code. So the transportation sector continues to be the largest greenhouse gas emitting sector in the state of New Jersey. And that's no surprise with the millions of personal vehicles, hundreds of thousands of trucks and buses, and other vehicles occupying the road daily. And so in 2023, New Jersey motorists traveled actually over 77 billion miles, according to the National Transportation Research Nonprofit. Light-duty vehicles occupy the lion's share of those vehicular emissions. And a study in 2021 commissioned by NRDC and Union of Concerned Scientists found that passenger vehicles and light-duty trucks contributed 80% of all greenhouse gas emissions from on-road vehicles. So this rule will help bring hundreds of thousands of light-duty electric vehicles on the road and improve upon existing emission standards for new vehicle sales in New Jersey. This will significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change and toxic co-pollutants that harm human health, particularly in areas with high traffic and in historically disenfranchised communities. Advanced Clean Cars II, as proposed in New Jersey, would incentivize manufacturers to offer vehicles at low MSRP rates and financial assistance programs for low-income New Jerseyans. This, in addition to current state and federal incentives, makes EVs more affordable to more moderate-income customers. We strongly recommend that ACC2 is adopted by the end of this year, latest by December 2023, so that New Jersey does not miss yet another model year, which means that 19,000 to 20,000 electric vehicles won't hit the road in time to meet our state's targets. The EV market is established and growing nationally, and ACC2 in the Garden State will only strengthen that market. So thank you again for that opportunity to comment, and New Jersey LCV will be submitting more in-depth written comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Next up is Ray Cantor.
Peg, and everyone else. My name is Ray Cantor. I am Deputy Chief Government Affairs Officer with the New Jersey Business and Industry Association. We will also be submitting more detailed comments before the end of the comment period. But I wanted to touch on a few points here today. We oppose adoption of this regulation. We oppose opting into the California program and with the mandate that internal combustion engines be phased out and banned entirely come 2035. There are three key reasons why we are taking this position. One is affordability. Despite efforts to provide incentives, those incentives are not nearly sufficient to make these cars affordable for the average family. We could talk about low and moderate income people, but there's also middle-class people who cannot afford these vehicles, even with the incentives. And there's no guarantee. There's probably almost a certainty that these incentives won't be around forever. When you make cars unaffordable, you're going to end up with a lot of people, much more than we have right now, who cannot afford to own an automobile. New Jersey is not California. Automobiles are essential for our way of life in New Jersey, to get to the supermarket, to go to the shore, to visit your doctor. We cannot tell people, as California is telling, and which is in the summary of these comments as well, that your only solution, if you are a low-income person or can't afford a car, is to ride-share, to buy a bike, or to, hopefully, it'll be an EV bus in your neighborhood. That's not a solution that the department should be putting forth. It's also impractical to do this, and I think everyone knows it's impractical to do this in the time period that we're talking about. We don't have enough electricity. We don't have the distribution system, both on a larger scale and even on a neighborhood-type of scale. From a charging perspective, you know, we don't see public charging to be the issue. We see the fact that you can't put enough chargers in place in this point in time, even at homes, to be significant, and there are a lot of places where you have apartments, condos, dense populated areas, where you know you can't put enough charging stations in or convenient for people. You can't tell people they need to walk blocks in order to charge their vehicle. It's also a matter of choice as well. It is fairly arrogant of government to dictate what type of car people can or cannot drive. People buy the cars for various different reasons, be it cost, be it size of their family, be it their ability to charge or to make other type of decisions. The market is speaking, and the market will continue to speak. EVs are being backlogged on dealer lots because the market is just not there, even with all the early adopters, even with all the incentives that we're providing right now. We should not be dictating and mandating that a single woman, you know, or a mother, has to walk blocks to her car or spend an hour charging her car in areas that she's not comfortable. This is a choice, and as the market develops, as prices come down, and they have not come down, they're only going up, these things will work themselves out. I also want to emphasize as well that this is not a 2035 issue. This is an issue that's going to happen within the next three years. As the, if you adopt the rule this year by model year 27, what, 43% of all new car sales must be EVs? That is going to have an immediate impact in limiting the ability or availability of all cars, even if they're not EVs, and it's going to drive the price up of those ICE vehicles, and it's going to drive the price up within three years of used cars as well. It's just a matter of supply and demand. Once you limit how many cars or ICE cars can be sold, there'll be less on the market. There'll be more demand for gasoline-powered ICE vehicles, used cars. So even on the used cars, the price will go up within three years, making even those cars more unaffordable.
Right, I know that's, excuse me, your time is up. I know the timer got messed up a little bit, but
Yeah, I was trying to follow the timer.
About five minutes. Yeah, you're about five minutes now.
I'll just, well, again, I was going by the timer, which wasn't making sense.
I know, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'll just wrap up and say we think the market should dictate. This program doesn't work, and we ask the department not to adopt these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we have Tom Van Heek from Rivian.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Hi, Tom. Yes, we can.
Great. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Tom Van Heek, Senior Policy Advisor at Rivian Automotive, where our mission is to keep the world adventurous forever. Rivian is a US-based EV manufacturer, building our R1T pickup, the R1S7 passenger SUV, and an electric delivery van that's currently exclusive to Amazon in Illinois. We plan to produce 52,000 EVs this year, more than doubling production versus 2022 as we continue to ramp our manufacturing capability in our second year of production here. Our vehicles meet the requirements of the ACC2 Regulations under consideration today and are proof that now is the time to adopt these standards. Rivian is also building a network of DC fast chargers across the country, known as the Rivian Adventure Network. Forty-four sites are already up and running, with more joining the network each week. As an automaker, we strongly support the Advanced Clean Cars II Standards. Implementing the rules in New Jersey would cement the state's role as a committed leader in addressing climate change, reducing harmful air pollution, and growing the EV market. The central purpose of ACC2 is to support all stakeholders, including the auto industry, utilities, and charging providers in marshalling capital and planning and sequencing their investments on a reasonable timeline. Adopting the full program of standards as early as possible provides maximum lead time for businesses and an unambiguous long-term target to build to. We applaud the state's commitment to doing so this year. The rules are ambitious but achievable. ACC2 was developed by policymakers after extensive engagement with stakeholders, including industry, and a robust technical feasibility and cost-benefit analysis. The regulations impose obligations on vehicle manufacturers, like Rivian, and we're ready to meet those requirements with our product lineup. ACC2 is the clear choice for achieving the state's EV goals, which have only become more important as our society increasingly feels the impacts of climate change. Moreover, the ACC2 Standards provide much-needed certainty to guide long-term investments for all market stakeholders and participants. Rivian thanks New Jersey and the department for considering such an important rulemaking package, and we respectfully urge you to adopt the rules. We will submit additional extended comments in writing following this hearing before the deadline in October. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. I know there's a lot of comments in the chat about wanting to see the lineup of speakers. Monica is working to add a numbered list of speakers to the chat. The first 10 were posted at the very, very beginning of the meeting, so if you scroll all the way up, you should be able to see it. But just in case, she's going to repost speakers 1 through 20 and have them numbered so that you can see where we are in the queue. Next up, we have Kathy Harris from Natural Resources Defense Council.
Thank you, Peg. Good morning, everybody. My name is Kathy Harris, K A T H Y H A R R I S, and I'm a senior advocate for clean vehicles and fuels at NRDC, the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm speaking today to urge New Jersey to adopt the Advanced Clean Cars II Rule by the end of 2023. ACC2 is a win-win-win-win. A win for New Jerseyans' public health, a win for New Jersey air quality, and a win for the climate. Air quality is a common sense, or ACC2 is a common sense rule that would bring over $97 billion of economic, health, air quality, and climate benefits to New Jersey and will help to reduce climate-harming pollution by 243 million metric tons, while also reducing NOx emissions by 93% by 2050. Adoption of ACC2 is consistent with New Jersey policies that have been in place for over a decade. ACC2 builds off the Advanced Clean Cars I Program, which New Jersey has been a part of since 2009, and helps to expand the overwhelming success of the initial iteration of the program. But importantly, ACC2 is also a win for drivers, who will save significant money in fueling and maintenance costs, while also helping to keep vehicle sales in New Jersey. Even today, electric vehicles are cheaper to own and operate than a comparable gasoline vehicle, providing significant savings for families. And we know that transportation is one of the largest household energy burdens. While upfront costs of new electric vehicles may be higher today than a gasoline vehicle, EV upfront costs are lowering, and the state and federal governments offer robust rebates to help offset this price difference. And a recent report by Energy Innovation shows that leased EVs are actually the cheapest option for drivers today. And ACC2 only affects new vehicle sales. And we know that around 25% of drivers purchase their vehicles in the new market. This regulation would not affect used sales, but would help to increase the number of used EVs available on the secondary market as the new vehicle market transitions to EVs, providing affordable, clean vehicles to the majority of drivers in the state. The transition to EVs is occurring. Automakers have already invested over $210 billion in investments here in the United States to support this transition. While many major automakers have also announced increased EV model availability and in some cases, complete phase-outs of gasoline vehicles within the next 15 years. ACC2 helps to accelerate this transition and guarantee that New Jerseyans will be able to purchase the latest clean vehicles they want here in New Jersey. Failure to adopt these regulations means that New Jerseyans would miss out on the win-win-win-win of ACC2, the win for air quality, the win for public health, the win for the economy, and the win for the climate. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up is Dave Pringle from Clean Water Action and Empower New Jersey.
For the David is available. He has COVID.
Sure that David is available. He has COVID. He's pretty sick.
Okay.
But I could speak in his place or we could, or you could wait till my turn.
Are you signed up separately, Amy?
Yes, I am. So I can wait till my turn when it's appropriate.
Okay. Next in the queue is Doug O'Malley.
Super. Thank you. Thank you so much, Peg. And I'll just state my name for the record. Doug, D-O-U-G, O'Malley, O-A-los, capital N, A-L-L-E-Y. And I serve as the director for Environment New Jersey, representing more than 80,000 citizen members and activists across the state. So I wanted to start off, first off, obviously thanking DP and the work of the staff for this proposal in, in front of us. We are almost at the end of summer. This is the hottest global summer on record and it is time to step on the electric vehicle accelerator. Today's hearing is showing strong public support for moving us to a clean electric transportation future. There have literally been thousands of New Jersey residents that have already weighed in, urging the Murphy administration, DP, to clean, to clean up our cars and to join other clean car states. And the reason is really quite simple is because cleaner cars will help to eliminate air and climate pollutants from our tailpipes. Our cars and trucks are the largest source of climate pollutants in the state. This is true across the country as well. And electric vehicles have reached an inflection point and it's imperative that New Jersey join these other leading clean car states, join these other leading clean car states and adopt these standards by the end of this calendar year to ensure that more electric vehicles are, are available. When we kind of talk about a public health risk, we have to acknowledge that we are seeing, we are going to see air pollution worsen because of climate change. We're actually going to see ozone alert days double over the course of the next three decades because of the impact from climate pollutants. There are a litany of, of climate impacts, obviously, to say, you know, extreme weather, hurricane seasons, coastal and inland flooding. All of these are supercharged by our vehicles. And the good news is, close to two decades ago, the New Jersey legislature passed the Clean Cars Act and New Jersey opted into the Clean Cars program. That program, led by New Jersey, now represents 40% of the automobile market in America. And that market is clearly moving forward. There are six states that adopted standards last, last year. The vast majority of clean car states are moving forward with adoption right now in model year 2023. And this is really kind of a, a moment where the automobile manufacturers are also leading the charge as well. GM, for example, has committed to phasing out the sale of new internal combustion engine cars by 2035 as well. This is obviously a transition, but it's a transition that is accelerating. And I think this is kind of crucial to note, this is not a decade ago. You can go to every major auto manufacturer and find not just a EV, but a EV and the type of vehicle that you are used to buying. That is, that's critical. And then in terms of cost, in some ways, many dealers are, you know, can't keep EVs on the lot. If you want to buy a Chevy Bolt, you have to reserve it in ahead of time. And in terms of, of cost, with the federal tax credit of 7,500 plus New Jersey's still national leading EV rebate of $4,000, you're looking at buying a new 2023 Chevy Bolt for a little over $21,000. And this is a key part of the Advanced Clean Cars program is that we need to accelerate the sale of new EVs to create a viable used car market. Majority of Americans and New Jerseyans buy their cars in the used car market. Obviously, by selling more new EVs, we provide the opportunity for people to get behind the wheel of, of an EV, whether it's new or whether it's used. And then nationally, I think it's, it's critical to note that the share of new EVs has exceeded 75% for the first half of this year. That's reaching a critical moment where it took us 10 years to reach the sale of the first million. It took less than a year to reach, to, to reach, to go from two to three million. So this is a reminder, we are seeing the market start to accelerate, but we need to make sure that New Jersey remains a leader here because of the impacts of air pollution, because of the impacts of climate pollution. Transportation, our cars and light trucks are our largest source of air, air pollution and climate pollution. That's why we need this action. Thank you so much, DP. And we urge adoption by the end of this calendar year to make sure we don't miss another model year. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next up, we have Ben Jealous. Is Ben on?
Hey, this is Zach Fabish with the Sierra Club. Ben, Ben is, because of some scheduling issues, isn't going to be on until about 10:15.
No problem. We'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. So after that, we have Deborah Coyle.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, Deb. Great. Wonderful.
Yeah, I'm listening to testimony for Advanced Clean Car, but what's up?
Oh, hi, Amy. I can hear you. So, good morning. My name's Deborah Coyle. I'm executive director of New Jersey Work Environment Council. We're a coalition of 70 labor, community, environmental organizations. And I'm also on the steering committee of Jersey Renews. And I'm here today in support of ACC2. And Peg, I want to thank you and the DEP staff for working on this regulation. You know, this is a good policy and we want to see New Jersey join the many other states who are looking to adopt and have adopt ACC2. And we want to continue to make New Jersey a leader in climate policy and put us in a good position to ensure we prioritize the EV market. As a previous speaker said, you know, we have more and more EVs coming out. We want to make sure that New Jersey's at the top of the list. And then I know there, you know, a previous speaker mentioned, you know, concerns of prices. You know, EVs are starting to come out from all different manufacturers, like all different price points that make them affordable for different income levels. And I think the one thing that, you know, we need to stay focused on is as more EVs are on the road, there really is no debate that how good that's going to be and go a long way in cleaning up our air from both greenhouse gas emissions and co-pollutants. And this is going to be a sound policy for communities that have disparaging impacts from pollution as well, such as our EJ communities. So ACC2, from my organization's view, it's, you know, it's a good public health policy. It's a good environmental policy. And also wanted to mention, you know, an important piece to us is some of our members are also unions. This is going to go a long way in creating a number of good paying jobs. I mean, looking at the EV infrastructure that will need to be built to accommodate all the new EVs on the road is pretty exciting. It's going to go a long way in creating good family sustaining jobs. We all know how expensive it is to live here in New Jersey. So I, I think it's also, you know, we need to think about the workers as well that are going to be put to work for this. And this really, right now, we're at a time, we just came off a really hot summer, right? We know temperatures are getting warmer. It's not really the time to kind of take our foot off the gas. We really need to move forward and take action. And I think adopting ACC2 is the right way to go when it comes to climate policy. And lastly is, you know, we have to also ensure as we're moving, as we're doing this transition, not just New Jersey, but you know, the nation as well, as we're doing this transition to EVs. We also want to make sure that we do have complementary policies to ensure no workers are left behind. As we're creating new jobs, there's also going to be a transition of jobs and some jobs that won't be there. So we have to make sure that those workers are, are taken care of. And they're also at the table as we move into this new economy. And finally, the last thing I'll say is, you know, you know, we stand with our brothers and sisters at the UAW. We need to make sure that the, talking about complementary policies, that we also have federal and state policies in place as we transition to EVs to make sure we're prioritizing US manufacturing. Because again, when you look at manufacturing jobs, these are typically, especially if you're looking at union manufacturing jobs, these are high, high wage jobs and people can really afford to raise a family on them. So again, thank you for your work on this. We're fully in support of ACC2 and we will be submitting more detailed comments. So thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, next on the list is Elizabeth Churchillo, I'm sorry, Division of Hospital Medicine at Cooper Health.
Thank you very much for allowing me the chance to speak on behalf of my patients in my community. I'm Elizabeth Churchillo, C-E-R-C-E-O-M-D. I'm testifying today in my role as chair for health and public policy for the American College of Physicians, New Jersey. And I also lead the Climate Health Task Force for the Medical Society of New Jersey. My views don't necessarily reflect those of my employers. As a physician practicing in an EJ community, I can assure you that air pollution resulting from transportation in New Jersey is first and foremost a health issue and discussions of costs that don't include health costs is imbalanced. New Jersey is one of the highest rates in the country of fossil fuel pollution and transportation contributes 46% of our greenhouse gas emissions statewide. Removing tailpipe emissions would have a sizable impact on health outcomes in the state and health co-benefits from decreased air pollution would substantially outweigh implementation costs. We're only now beginning to understand the full scope of the impact of fossil fuel pollution on public health. The World Health Organization estimates that air pollution from fossil fuel combustion results in 13.7 million premature deaths, which amounts to one in four deaths being preventable. And many times more people experience poor health from everything from cancer, heart disease, dementia, increased hospitalizations and much more. And the health effects of many toxics are often only uncovered years after millions have been exposed. Just think about the tobacco industry. Unlike tobacco, though, we know that everyone is at risk, although certainly some more than others, with children, pregnant women, disadvantaged communities, the elderly, those with comorbidities being disproportionately affected. We also know that New Jersey would not be the first to make the transition. We've already seen the natural experiment in California as residents rapidly transitioned to EVs and certainly similar legislation is being considered in many other states, Delaware included. And the health impacts in California were exactly what we as physicians would expect as EV adoption increased in a given zip code and air pollution dropped, so did asthma-related ER visits, such that the health benefits of EV in a local community were realized directly by those in that community. In response to concerns about cost, financial outcomes rarely include cost of health. And when this is factored in, the social immortality cost of carbon, again, it outweighs the cost of EV transition. The supposition that the market should dictate decision ignores the lives lost and the illness caused by fossil fuel position, pollution. ACC2 ensures a managed transition to the inevitable reality and acknowledges that the health of New Jerseyans are at stake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in the queue is Zach Khan from Tesla.
Great. Thank you. Hey, how are you? My name is Zach Khan, K-A-H-N. I'm a senior policy manager at Tesla. Thank you all for the opportunity for, to comment and thank you, DEP, for all your work on this regulation. Tesla's mission is to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. Moreover, Tesla believes the world will not be able to solve the climate change crisis without directly reducing air pollutant emissions from the transportation and power sectors. To accomplish its mission, Tesla designs, develops, manufactures and sells high-performance, fully-electric vehicles, energy generation and storage systems, sold well over a million vehicles last year and are expected to sell more this year. Tesla strongly supports New Jersey's adoption of the ACC2 regulations. New Jersey has long been a national leader on transportation electrification and it is vitally important that the state adopt these standards in order to continue to drive investment in electric vehicle manufacturing and specifically charging infrastructure in New Jersey. Reducing transportation emissions has been and should continue to be of top priority for New Jersey. The transportation sector, as has been stated before, is, is far and away the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in the state at more than 45%. The state has also, as mentioned, has a statutory goal to reduce GHG emissions by 80% below 2006 levels by 2050. And DEP itself has found that New Jersey will need to reduce GHG emissions from the transportation sector by 87% to meet this goal. Simply put, the adoption of ACC2 is an essential tool to make this ambitious goal a reality. In addition, adoption of ACC2 will help New Jersey comply with the US Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Air Act requirements for the 2015 National Ambient Air Quality Standards, or NACS, for ozone. The current level of ground-level ozone, NACS retained by the Trump administration was significantly controversial, excuse me, scientifically controversial. And just last month, the Biden administration announced that the EPA was initiating a new review of ozone NACS to reflect the latest science. Recent scientific evidence indicates a more stringent standard will provide significant public health and welfare benefits. So New Jersey should anticipate the ozone NACS level to be lowered and planning to reduce transportation emissions through electrification and doing so now is critical to ensure that the state is on a path to attainment under future more stringent standards. We support the, the adoption by reference to California code, adopting the regulation in full without delay, so we do not lose the year of eligibility. Stated by others, that the regulations already recognize that there's going to be a year delay in adoption due to the model year lead time by the regulation. But, but, you know, have, even without that, that gap that will be there, you know, having the certainty that the rule is coming will ensure that New Jersey does not lose out on EVs during that gap year, especially with the early compliance values. Further, Tesla believes the pace of EV innovation, cost reductions and investment, coupled with the public health and welfare imperatives to address criteria, air pollution and accelerating, and the accelerating impacts of climate change, support New Jersey's adoption of ACC2. New Jersey, as stated by others, will not be alone there. In many states in the Northeast and across the country, they've already adopted ACC2 or currently working to do so this year. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment and to support New Jersey's effort to mitigate the detrimental effects caused by transportation-related emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. So we're going to go back to Ben Jealous from Sierra Club. Is Ben on now? Okay. Next in the queue is Pam Frank from ChargeEVC. Hey, Pam.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. My name is Pam Frank, P-A-M, Frank, F-R-A-N-K. I am the CEO of ChargeEVC. We're made up of about 40 members working in New Jersey to accelerate electrification of transportation. I'm going to be brief this morning. We do plan to submit written comments. First and foremost, adopting this policy is consistent with established New Jersey law and policy. So this should not come as a surprise. It is just the next natural step in what we've set out for ourselves, both in law and policy. I want to also point out that New Jersey does not do this alone. There are other leading clean car states that have adopted and are on track to adopt this policy that make up a huge percentage of the car market in the United States. Another important point to put out is that this is not a ban on the IC engine vehicles. As we have seen in the press, it is important to understand that this regulation and these rules would basically prevent the sale of new IC engine vehicles. The used IC engine car market would continue and we expect it would continue for some time. Also important to point out that most of the cars that we purchase in the state of New Jersey, the vast majority are used cars and we'll have more specific New Jersey data to back that up. The other point I want to make is contextual, which is simply this. We can do big things in New Jersey. While it seems daunting to adopt a goal of 330,000 EVs by 2025, I will note that this past June, we now have 123,000 and this trend is accelerating. Years ago, in 2002, I sat in a room with a dozen people that thought a moonshot for solar was 90 megawatts. And folks, we blew past that in 2020 more than 10 times. Additionally, there are costs to transition and there are benefits of transition. And as we heard from previous speakers and the physician in particular, it is important to draw that circle broadly and widely and consider all benefits that are typically not reflected in current markets that we have. Allowing the markets to set policy for the kinds of cars we drive will just not get us where we need to be as quickly as possible. There are times and places for good regulation that can accelerate. This is the time and place for this regulation. We will continue to study this and provide New Jersey-specific data that backs up all of the facts that we put out. And I invite a robust debate as we hopefully adopt this policy by the end of the year and put us in the right and file of leading clean car states. Last, I want to thank everybody at the DEP that has worked tirelessly. Last, I want to thank everybody at the DEP that has worked tirelessly to get this to the point we are today. And I just sort of want to end by saying today, very proud to be a Jersey girl. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Pam. I understand that Ben is now on, so let's go back to Ben Jelis from Sierra Club. There you are. Oh, you're on mute, Ben.
All right, thank you.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Ben Jelis. I'm proud to serve as the seventh Executive Director of the Sierra Club. I previously served as the seventeenth National President of the NAACP. Also spent my childhood summers at Exit Zero, Cape May, New Jersey. Transportation is the largest source of climate pollution in the U.S. and a major source of harmful air pollutants for communities across the nation. Zero emission vehicles, which require no gasoline or diesel and emit no pollution from their tailpipes, present a critical opportunity in addressing the climate crisis by reducing pollution, protecting public health, creating U.S. jobs in green energy, and helping the U.S. lead the way globally in a cars market that is searing away from dependence on fossil fuels and towards a zero emissions future. ACC two is a critical tool in reducing emissions due to the requirement for car manufacturers to gradually increase the sales of new zero emission vehicles to one hundred percent by two thousand and thirty-five. This is a lifesaving policy. New Jersey is currently out of compliance with the EPA's goals for reducing ozone pollution. This failure not only impacts the health of residents of New Jersey, but also of the surrounding states. New Jersey is a national climate leader on many fronts, and adopting ACC two will help keep the state on the path. This will benefit New Jersey, and this will benefit our country. Unfortunately, New Jersey is one of the only clean car states in the region that is not already committed to adopting the ACC two program before the end of this year. The overwhelming majority of states in the Northeast and in the mid-Atlantic regions are expected to have finalized ACC two by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. ACC two will not only benefit the health of New Jersey's residents, but also accelerate growth of our economy. A report commissioned by Sierra Club and the National Resources Defense Council found that by adopting ACC two by the end of two thousand and twenty-three, New Jersey has the potential to generate ninety-seven billion dollars in cumulative benefit by the end of two thousand and fifty. Sierra Club calls on New Jersey to adopt ACC two without delay swiftly and fully embracing this regulation will set the state on a path to lower transportation emissions and clean air for all who live and work in the Garden State. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next up, we have Dr. Andrea Marpolera Calamina. I'm sorry. Is she on? Andrea or Andrea, are you on? Okay, welcome back. Next then is Dr. Catherine Chen. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you just join? No, okay, there's Catherine. Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Chen.
Hi, my name is Catherine Chen, spelled C A T H E R I N E C H E N. I'm a physician at Rutgers, Washington Medical School, and I'm the Designated Curriculum Content Expert for Climate Health and Environmental Sustainability. Today, I'm speaking as a private citizen and physician. This year, I've spent seeing more hospital admissions for potentially climate change-related issues than in any other of the seven years I've been in practice. There were wildfire smoke admissions for headaches, nausea, vomiting, shortness of breath. There were occupational-related injuries with kidney failure and dehydration from heat exposure. And these were the only ones where, these were only the ones where we could actually directly attribute hospitalization to environmental causes. According to the EPA, temperatures in our state are increasing faster than those in our surrounding areas, New York, Pennsylvania, or Maryland. New Jersey is particularly dense with more miles of highway per square mile than any other state except for Rhode Island. And that means that's about four point seven times higher than the national average in terms of highway density. This means that our homes, schools, and workplaces are that much closer to highways and major thoroughfares and their combustion byproducts. In New Jersey, we have two point, two million children, one point five million people over the age of sixty-five, and seven hundred and sixty thousand people with asthma, four hundred thousand with COPD, and five hundred thousand or more patients with cardiovascular diseases, all of whom are vulnerable to pollutants such as produced by transportation, such as nitrous oxide, ozone, and particulate matter, two point five microns or smaller in size, which can reach far down into the lung tissue. Transportation emissions account for forty-two percent of our greenhouse gases here in the state, and medium and heavy-duty vehicles account for nearly a quarter of those transportation emissions. When we consider the issues of health disparities as we brought up before, inequity of exposure to toxins is one of these causes. Truck traffic often runs through our most underprivileged neighborhoods, putting our communities there at highest health risk. The ACC two is an opportunity to reduce these inequities. And adopting ACC two in New Jersey this year could reduce by two thousand and thirty-five emissions from light-duty vehicles up to seventy-two percent below our even two thousand and twenty-one levels. And likewise for particulate matter, two point five, and sulfur and nitrous oxides. The health benefits of these would be dramatic. The American Lung Association estimates that implementing zero emission standards like the ACC two could prevent nearly four thousand premature deaths, ninety-two thousand asthma attacks, and avoid over four hundred thousand lost workdays by two thousand and fifty. We have an opportunity to adopt this lifesaving measure in New Jersey. Every year, emission standards are delayed. These losses in our communities that our communities experience are extended. And my patients who are admitted to the hospital for asthma attacks, COPD exacerbations, and heart disease would undoubtedly benefit from this legislation. So thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Next, Drew Tompkins.
Good morning. My name is Drew Tompkins, T O M P K I N S. And I am the Director of the Jersey Renew's Coalition. Jersey Renew's is a coalition of community organizations, labor unions, and environmental groups working to move the state forward towards a just, clean energy economy. And we are strongly in support of ACC two adoption by the end of the year. ACC two, as you've heard from many other groups who have elaborated further on it, is good for communities as it will lower ground-level air pollution, is good for the environment as it will fight climate change since over forty-five percent of the state's emissions come from the transportation sector. And it's good for labor in our state as we build out the infrastructure necessary to charge vehicles. And also more widely in the country as we begin building more and more electric vehicles here in the United States, as well as the battery facilities that are necessary to support those vehicles. We must adopt ACC two by the end of the year in order to ensure that we don't miss the model year and we continue New Jersey's leadership on clean cars. But I do also just want to mention that we can't stop there. We must also continue working towards a just transition across the economy, both in transportation, but more widely, that centers communities and creates good-paying union jobs throughout the state so that everybody can enjoy the family-sustaining benefits that those jobs that can create because of the opportunities from the clean economy. And I will stop there and we'll be submitting more comments, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Drew. Richard Lawton, New Jersey's Sustainable Business Council.
Hi, good morning. I'm Richard Lawton, that's L A W T O N. I'm the Executive Director of the New Jersey Sustainable Business Council. And we're a network of companies across a wide range of sectors that are working to advance a combination of market innovation and policy change to create a more just and sustainable economy. NJSPC supports the adoption of ACC two rules this year for three main reasons. Number one, ACC two helps address the growing imperative of climate change. Secondly, its design strikes a balance between the needs for urgency and pragmatism. Third, ACC two will yield near-term and cumulative benefits over time. So first, in terms of the imperative, we know that we must dramatically reduce carbon emissions if we have any hope of mitigating the increasing costs and risk of climate change, while also maintaining or enhancing the quality of life on Earth. There are no silver bullets or quick fixes, but there are places of leverage where concentrated and coordinated efforts in investment, innovation, and policy change can help drive the positive systemic change we need. One area of significant leverage is in decarbonizing the transportation sector since it accounts for over forty percent of carbon emissions in New Jersey. Fortunately, zero-emission EV technology already offers a superior alternative to internal combustion engines. But EV technology represents a competitive threat to industries and companies who have a vested interest in maintaining the monopoly power of fossil fuels and who are using their economic and political power to raise as many barriers to entry as possible. From the standpoint of protecting their narrow self-interest and profit maximization, this is perfectly rational for them, but not for the rest of us. Top economists have called climate change the largest market failure in history. So relying on market forces alone to address this market failure would be self-defeating and frankly naive. Secondly, ACC two is a critical component of a larger strategy to address this market failure. Its design strikes a pragmatic balance between urgency and realism. By establishing specific thresholds and suspense dates, ACC two provides a degree of market certainty that private investment requires and will help to lessen the monopoly power of fossil fuel interests. The design is realistic since it's aligned with decisions by major car companies to transition from gas engines to EVs within the same timeframe. It also serves to complement and reinforce state and federal incentives aimed at overcoming initial cost barriers for consumers and companies. And by allowing the continued sale of used gas-powered cars, consumers will still be able to choose them, and low-income households will still have access to affordable gas-powered vehicles. Thirdly, ACC two will contribute to the creation of significant public health, environmental, and economic benefits. By increasing the growth rate of the EV market, the resulting economies of scale will lower EV prices as they have with solar and wind technology, making EVs more affordable. The price of lithium battery cells, the costliest part of an EV, has declined more than thirty percent since March twenty-two. The price of lithium has fallen more than fifty percent this year alone, and the cost of nickel and cobalt have also declined. In August, geologists discovered lithium deposits near the Nevada-Oregon border that are estimated to be one of the largest deposits in the world. This will help develop more secure and resilient domestic supply chain. Consumers like myself and businesses who have made the switch to EVs have already experienced them as being superior technology with significantly lower maintenance and operating costs. Finally, not adopting ACC two will incur unnecessary opportunity costs that will put New Jersey at a competitive disadvantage compared to other states that have adopted ACC two and will be a disservice to all New Jersey residents and the public interest. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Alex Ambrose from New Jersey Policy Perspective.
Thank you, Peg. My name is Alex Ambrose, A L E X A M B R O S E. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and especially to the DEP for all of your work in moving this policy forward so far. As you said, I'm with New Jersey Policy Perspective. We are a think tank that uses data-driven research to advance social, racial, and economic justice. And I'm here to support swift adoption of Advanced Clean Cars Two. Despite what the opposition says, this is not a ban on gas cars. This initiative will bring economic, environmental, and social benefits to the Garden State, and it will gradually move the market towards safer, cleaner, and cost-saving technologies such as electric vehicles and plug-in hybrids. The recent statewide Strategic Climate Action Plan that was just published this week details that the state will need at least four point five million plug-in electric vehicles on the road by two thousand and thirty-five to meet our emissions goals. And we know that fossil fuel prices are expensive and highly volatile, and transportation is the number one contributor to New Jersey's air pollution. For years, the American Lung Association has given the state failing grades in several counties for air quality. Our families are already suffering from air pollution and expensive health problems, especially those in already overburdened communities. Advanced Clean Cars Two will make significant strides in reducing both greenhouse gas emissions and our air quality issues. Electric vehicles and plug-in hybrids have never been safer, cleaner, or more fuel-efficient than they are now. By promoting electric and fuel-efficient cars, we can reduce our carbon footprint, lower smog-forming emissions, and decrease our reliance on fossil fuels. This will not only safeguard our environment, but will also enhance the health and well-being of our citizens. Cleaner air means a fewer respiratory illnesses, lower healthcare costs, and an overall improved quality of life for everyone in the state, especially those in overburdened communities. We all benefit from better air quality. In fact, by two thousand and thirty-five, we will see nearly three-quarters reduction in pollution, like from NOx and carbon dioxide compared to today. But we will only see those benefits if New Jersey moves quickly. Our state is already lagging behind in the green economy. By encouraging the use of cleaner and more efficient vehicles, we can invest in a greener future that will drive innovation and add high-quality, green jobs to our economy. This policy will boost the green economy, protect our environment, and advance social equity. It's a win-win-win for our state and its residents. We urge Governor Murphy to take swift action and prioritize Advanced Clean Cars Two. Let's lead the way in sustainable transportation and show the entire nation that New Jersey is committed to a cleaner, greener, and more equitable future for all its citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Alex. Next up is Angeli Ramos from New Jersey Sierra Club.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Angeli Ramos, A N J U L I R A M O S. And I'm the New Jersey Director for the Sierra Club. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing and speaking on behalf of over ninety thousand members and supporters in New Jersey. I would like to start by saying that New Jersey Sierra Club and Sierra Club in general, as mentioned by Executive Director Ben Jelis, avidly supports the urgent adoption of Advanced Clean Cars Two. New Jersey needs to catch up to our neighboring states and kickstart our just transition to accessible, clean transportation. As a mid-weight state between urban centers like New York City and Philadelphia, New Jersey is densely populated and heavily trafficked. The transportation sector is our state's dirtiest accounting for thirty-four percent of New Jersey's greenhouse gas emissions. Greenhouse gas emissions exacerbate the climate crisis and increase the risks of more extreme weather events, including hurricanes, severe rainfall, and heat waves. Tailpipe emissions only also contain harmful pollutants that further degrade air quality and put communities in every corner of New Jersey at risk. It is clear that vehicles operated in densely populated New Jersey have a significant impact on ozone as well. Thirteen out of fifteen counties in New Jersey have reported air quality that received poor grades from the American Lung Association due to high ozone days. New Jersey's historically high ozone levels are exacerbating race and income-based health disparities and have a major impact on New Jersey's environmental justice communities. For example, EPA's EJ Screen Tool indicates that the surrounding area to Trenton, it's in the eightieth to ninetieth percentile for the ozone, EJ Index, an index that combines ozone levels with demographic data by averaging populations of low-income people and people of color. In other words, only about ten percent of the U.S. population has worse ozone pollution impacts when considering the demographic factors of income and race. Emergency department visits for asthma are more than five times higher for Black New Jerseyans residents than other New Jersey residents. Reducing NOx emissions and ozone precursor is therefore an essential aspect for mitigating the adverse and unjust health impacts affecting New Jersey residents. Thus, our current fossil fuel center transportation infrastructure is directly harming our residents' public health and quality of life. To address this air pollution and environmental injustice, New Jersey must curb emissions from our vehicles as soon as possible. For New Jersey to be prioritized when providing zero-emission vehicles for sale, it needs to adopt Advanced Clean Cars Two as soon as possible. Not adopting the rule by the end of the year means that New Jersey will miss yet another model year to which car manufacturers will prioritize other states. Advanced Clean Cars Two needs to be adopted by the end of the year so that New Jersey does not miss yet another model year. We've already lost two thousand and twenty-six. The faster new zero-emission vehicles are introduced on the roads, the faster these will enter the used vehicle market. the faster these will enter the used vehicle market, making them more affordable and accessible to all New Jerseans. Every day we delay the implementation of this lifesaving rule, more New Jerseans will feel the impacts of poor air quality and climate change. Governor Murphy must adopt the rule as soon as possible and no later than by the end of this year. Our public and environmental health depend on a cleaner transportation sector. Thank you.
Thank you, Angeli. The next person is Sean Moen.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Sean Moen, S-E-A-N-M-O-H-E-N, Tri-County Sustainability in South Jersey. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. We all remember those dark days in the early nineteen nineties when the EPA launched the Energy Star program and government agents came to our homes in the middle of the night and forced us to replace our old dishwashers and air conditioners with more efficient models. Of course, that didn't happen. No one's coming for your Pontiac, Bonneville, or Ford Taurus. As someone with decades of experience working for the world's premier investment banks, let me state emphatically that there's nothing worse for New Jersey's businesses than high oil prices. Starting this summer, Saudi Arabia and Russia began systematically cutting oil production and output. This morning, the spot price for Brent crude is almost ninety-four dollars a barrel. The average price per gallon of gas in New Jersey is three dollars and seventy cents. That's the highest of the year. Oh, and it's hurricane season. It's time for America and New Jersey to throw off the shackles of Saudi Arabia for both climate and business reasons. We ask the DEP in the state to advance the implementation of ACC two with great haste. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is Jim Appleton.
Hi, good morning, Peg, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jim Appleton. I'm president of the New Jersey Coalition of Automotive Retailers, NJCar. Appleton is spelled A-P-P-L-E-T-O-N. Let me start, and I represent the franchise new car dealers here in the state of New Jersey that sell and service all types of vehicles, including EVs. Two points I'd like to emphasize right up front. First, nobody denies climate change is real or that we must move with all due deliberate speed to reduce our carbon footprint from automobiles. And I'd like to acknowledge that both automakers and auto retailers have already invested billions, indeed, tens of billions, to design, build, and sell electric vehicles. In fact, we estimate that New Jersey new car dealers last year spent over a hundred and fifty million dollars on their own investing in the necessary tools, training, and equipment to sell and service EVs. So point number one is we're all in on EVs. Point number two is something that I think we have to acknowledge, which is New Jersey and all the other ACC two states will be a one-hundred-percent EV sales market when consumers want to buy only EVs, not when government mandates it. How about we get to ten percent or fifteen percent EV sales in this state before we mandate thirty-five percent by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven, sixty-five percent by twenty thirty, or a hundred percent by twenty thirty-five? How about we demonstrate the capacity to meet the current Cal Lev mandates before we double and triple down on even more stringent rules? Let's acknowledge the fact that the current California plan that we operate under calls for model year sales this year to come in at twenty-two percent. We're at less than ten percent. Frankly, we believe this plan will frustrate and cause a consumer backlash that will slow our roll to an EV future, not accelerate it. Let me explain. By imposing stringent and unrealistic mandates on the percentage of EVs manufacturers deliver for sale in New Jersey, the regulation will not force more people to buy EVs if they cannot afford one or if they cannot charge at home or if they do not trust an anemic and unreliable public charging infrastructure. Many consumers will simply choose to hold on to their older cars longer or opt into the used car market, which is not regulated by ACC two. And since the regulation doesn't appear to prevent a consumer from buying a vehicle they want and they can afford out of the state and registering it here in New Jersey, the rule ignores the reality in the marketplace, which is that government can mandate, but we only achieve success when consumers embrace. Simply put, these government mandates are designed to restrict supply of ICE vehicles, and that will naturally result in higher prices for all new vehicles, throwing fuel on an inflationary fire that will make buying and owning a new car virtually unaffordable for working and middle-class families in New Jersey. Obviously, what we need is a market-savvy, national, indeed international, solution, not a piecemeal state-by-state solution to climate change, not a political solution with no real hope of moving the market. Auto retailers are all in on EVs. We want to work with the administration and have worked with the administration and other stakeholders to try to achieve our shared goals. And we urge the department at this time not to move forward with ACC two and instead to go back to the drawing board to analyze the new EPA, more stringent EPA rule and determine which path forward is better for New Jersey. And the alternative, we would urge the department to write into the regs a formal midterm review process come 2026 to determine where we are with respect to compliance and make recommendations to the legislature and a new governor about what we must do to comply or whether reverting to the federal plan would better serve our shared goals of transitioning to a zero-emission future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next is Nick Egglehoff from CER, CERIS.
Yep, thank you, Nick Egglehoff, Senior Policy Associate for CERIS. Thanks for the opportunity to read. So we strongly support the ambitious Advanced Clean Cars Two program that accelerates electric vehicle deployment and ensures requisite emission reductions from internal combustion engine vehicles at the pace and scale that climate change and public health crises demand. Adopting strong vehicle standards is necessary and feasible, and doing so will generate significant climate, economic, and public health benefits across the country. Climate change poses a significant risk to our long-term economic success, threatens the health and livelihood of communities in which we operate, and disrupts the value chains on which we rely. Because of these risks, we are making ambitious commitments to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and invest in clean energy technologies. The transportation sector is currently responsible for the majority of greenhouse gas emissions in the US. Its impacts on the climate continue to grow. Transportation of people, goods, or services represent a substantial component of each of our carbon footprints and major costs for our supply chains. We are counting on strong policies to help us meet our own climate and air quality goals while delivering public health and economic benefits for our communities and employees alike. For businesses and institutions, zero-emission vehicles, particularly battery electric vehicles, offer significant benefits. By transitioning to zero-emission vehicles, we can reduce operational costs through lower fuel and maintenance costs, avoid risks associated with the volatility of fossil fuel prices and supply, enhance company reputations, and improve workforce recruitment and retention. ACC two creates a supply of zero-emission vehicles to meet our demand, which will accelerate our transition to zero-emission vehicles and encourage economies of scale that will help bring down costs and set the stage for further economic development, such as electric vehicle charging infrastructure. By spurring local innovation and investment in clean energy technology manufacturing, ACC two will help to develop a more energy-efficient economy, create new jobs, cut costs for our value change, and mitigate climate risk. ACC two will also improve public health and reduce health costs in our communities. More than forty percent of Americans, over a hundred and thirty-five million people, are living in places with unhealthy air pollution that threatens lung and respiratory health. And the burden of greenhouse gas emissions from transportation is disproportionately borne by low-income and communities of color. Strong policies that result in improving air quality and access to cleaner transportation are critical for improving public health, addressing inequities, preventing and preventing further economic strain. Reducing respiratory illness, mistakes of work, and hospitalizations leads to more disposable income for individuals and families and help reduce the financial pressure on our healthcare system. As commercial vehicles in our fleet and value change, as well as our employees' personal vehicles cross state lines, these impacts will extend beyond the state where we operate. New research shows that combined with a ninety-percent clean energy grid, electrifying all new cars and trucks by 2035 would prevent a hundred and fifty thousand premature deaths and avoid one-point-three trillion in economic and health costs by 2050. As businesses and institutions, we're making significant commitments to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and protect health and economic well-being of communities in which we live and operate. However, these commitments will not enough be to meet our shared climate goals. With no equivalent federal policy at this time, expeditious and ambitious state action is imperative. As a diverse coalition representing footprints in thirty-six states, we strongly support the adoption of ACC two to accelerate vehicle electrification. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next is Michael Sealback from American Lung Association.
Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Michael, M-I-C-H-E-L, Sealback, S-E-I-L-B-A-C-K. I'm the National Assistant Vice President for State Public Policy with the American Lung Association. I'm happy to be with you to encourage New Jersey to move forward with the lifesaving Advanced Clean Cars Two rule package without delay. The ACC two program offers two main avenues to cleaning the air and reducing health burdens. First, the program requires new vehicles' combustion engines to be cleaner over time. Second, the program sets stronger zero-emission sales requirements for new vehicle technologies over time to protect health. The Lung Association's research demonstrates why this is so important. There are only two counties in New Jersey that received an A grade for ozone pollution in the Lung Association's annual State of the Air Report. But there are over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents living with asthma, including more than one-hundred-thousand kids. Millions more residents are at greater risk due to harmful air pollution associated with other lung and heart diseases and other vulnerabilities. As was touched on earlier, the Lung Association released a report last year called Zeroing in Unhealthy Air, which highlighted the benefits of increasing zero-emission technologies in new passenger vehicles, medium and heavy-duty trucks alongside clean energy resources. The assumptions in this study track closely with the ACC two and the Advanced Clean Trucks standard previously adopted for New Jersey. As previous speakers mentioned, by 2050, the ongoing transition to zero emissions could translate to forty-three-point-six billion dollars in cumulative public health benefits in New Jersey, three thousand nine hundred and sixty deaths avoided, ninety-two thousand four hundred asthma attacks avoided, and four hundred and sixty-four thousand lost workdays avoided. And these are New Jersey's specific estimates. These standards are especially important as climate change amplifies the conditions for unhealthy air, driving the greater likelihood of ozone pollution formation. We also recognize that these conditions place a greater inequitable burden on our most vulnerable and disadvantaged communities. Thank you for your consideration of the ACC two rule as a critical health intervention to save lives, prevent tens of thousands of asthma attacks and lost workdays by delivering cleaner air to all communities, while also taking an important bite out of climate pollution. As noted in written comments submitted in advance of this hearing, the Lung Association puts a high priority on these policies, and we urge you to approve this rule without delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next is Scott Fisher. Not sure Scott is on. Let's go to Christine Waldren.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Christine Waldren, spelled W-A-L-D-R-E-N, and I represent the company ECOS, spelled E-C-O-S, manufacturer of safer, plant-based cleaning products located in Parsippany. And I'm here today to urge the department to adopt the ACC two rule in New Jersey by December 2023. Adoption of ACC two in 2023 is critical for New Jersey to achieve its goal of cutting climate pollutants by fifty percent by 2030, to keep up with nearly every other clean car state and to ensure that New Jersey doesn't lose another model year as part of this program. As a manufacturer in the state of New Jersey for thirty-five years, ECOS is deeply concerned about the health of our employees, our community, and our consumers in New Jersey and throughout the US. Our mission is to help protect the health of people and the planet through safer cleaning products. And to achieve our mission, we've taken many steps to reduce our carbon emissions and positively impact the rapidly increasing harms of climate change through more sustainable and low-carbon manufacturing practices. However, we know that statewide action must be taken to protect our communities, especially underserved communities that are often impacted first and worst by vehicle emissions and climate change impacts. We've also seen significant financial impacts to our business from operational disruptions due to climate change impacts, and we believe that adopting ACC two is an essential step to mitigate these impacts. Adopting the ACC two rule in New Jersey will ensure that our residents can access the zero-emission vehicles they want within our state while solidifying New Jersey's role as a climate leader. Prior meetings on this subject have shown that New Jerseyans support the ACC two rule, and they want it adopted in full before the end of this year. This is a critical moment for New Jersey to join other clean car states in moving towards a clean transportation future and ensure that our state can access the full range of economic and public health benefits of this transition. We ask you to adopt ACC two this year. We also strongly urge the department to work with other state departments and stakeholders to develop a comprehensive, just transition plan. As we move policy forward to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and transition to a clean energy future, we must maintain New Jersey's place as a climate leader and maximize the benefits that this rule offers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christine. We are about halfway through, and we are going to take a five-minute break for the benefit of this stenographer and all of us who've had more than one cup of coffee and need to go to the restroom. So it is ten fifty-nine right now. We will reconvene at eleven oh four. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everyone. For those of you that are just joining, we took a five-minute break. We're about halfway through our list of pre-registered speakers. I'm going to go back to two people that I called on previously that weren't on yet. Scott Fisher, are you on? Okay. Andrea Calamena from Green Latinos, are you on? Okay, next up is Mary Jo Foley Baroncott from the Rural and Agriculture Council of America. Are you on, Mary?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, my name is Mary Jo Foley, spelled M-A-R-Y-J-O-F-O-L-E-Y, with the Rural and Agriculture Council of America. We are in firm opposition to Advanced Clean Cars II. ACC2 would require manufacturers to phase out gas and diesel-powered engines by 2035. This proposal effectively bans internal combustion engine vehicles. New Jersey's rural and agricultural communities will be hardest hit by this proposal. Internal combustion engine vehicles are a necessary part of everyday life for rural Americans where it's not an easy task to find an electric vehicle charging station. As of 2022, more than 833,400 New Jersey residents live in rural areas at the fringes of the states, yet they take up the majority of the state's landmass. These areas also contain the majority of the state's farmland. Food and agriculture is New Jersey's third-largest industry behind pharmaceuticals and tourism, bringing in billions of dollars in revenue to the state. Rural residents suffer the most from the effects of an aging power grid as external factors like heavy winds, snowstorms, and overusage of electric circuits by urban areas impact transmission. In particular, thousands of residents in rural towns along the Jersey Shore and South Jersey suffered multiple outages in the last few months due to these vulnerabilities. If the grid isn't ready to absorb the demands of thousands more electric vehicles through the implementation of ACC2 every year, we could lose grid reliability and be subject to more frequent outages. As mentioned, with the ACC2, there will be massive increased demands in the New Jersey power grid, which also likely means higher prices for New Jersey electricity consumers who already pay some of the highest rates in the country. For consumers, the state's most recent electricity rate hike will raise electricity bills by as much as 7%, depending on the provider. Mandating electric vehicles by 2035 will place more demand on the power grid, but will do nothing to increase the supply of electricity. Simple economic theory shows us that an increase in demand without a correlating increase in supply only results in higher energy prices. Further, the cost of the electric vehicle itself is burdensome to most New Jersey residents. The Kelley Blue Book reports the average price for a brand-new electric vehicle at $55,000, while the average four-door sedan cost around $35,000. Going beyond that initial $20,000 price difference, the American Automobile Association also estimates that electric vehicle owners spend at minimum 600 more annually than combustion-engine-powered cars. The initial cost and maintenance of electric vehicles is an overwhelming burden to ask of consumers. Therefore, the Rural and Agriculture Council of America stands in firm opposition to ACC2, but do stand ready to discuss other ways the state can reach its emission reduction goals without disproportionately affecting the third-largest economic driver in the state and its rural residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Next up is Eric DeGesero.
Thank you, Peg. Good morning. Last name is spelled D-G-E-S-R-O, D-E, capital G-E-S like Sam, E-R-O, Fuel Merchants Association of New Jersey. I'd like to start by thanking the men and women of the New Jersey State Police for their service and dedication. Growing up in Sussex County, the New Jersey State Police were entrusted with my safety and that of my family. They're ultimately entrusted with all of our safeties, as well as that of the governor. In their judgment, the best way to protect the governor is to have him ride around in a brand-new, big-black SUV with an internal combustion engine. The governor is smart to follow the state police on matters of public safety. Although he does have the authority to override their decision, he smartly decided with a recommendation that an ICE vehicle is the way to go. Governor Murphy, however, is entrusted with the safety of me and my family, you and yours, and the 9.2 million of us that call New Jersey home. And in his judgment, the best way to protect all of us is we get to ride in an EV. This isn't some far-off date in 2035. Beginning in calendar year 2025, when model year 2026 cars start to be sold and is a little over 20 months from now, 1/3 of new cars sold in New Jersey must be in EV, limiting the supply and driving up cost of all ICE cars. As Governor Murphy's New Jersey do as he dictates to us, not as he does for himself. There have been a number of people that talk about the established law in New Jersey so far this morning. And that is true. In 2003, the legislature passed the California Car Mandate and gave the executive the authority to adopt a zero-emission-vehicle mandate. And in a breathtaking delegation of legislative authority, didn't even require the DEP to have to follow the Administrative Procedures Act. In 2013, the legislature repealed that provision of the law. That is the established law in New Jersey. Until the governor recognizes that the safety of 9.2 million of us are as important as his own, this rule should be withdrawn. Thank you, Peg.
Thanks, Eric. Next, we have Jackie Cohen from Tri-State Transportation Campaign. Jackie, are you on? Okay, we'll come back to Jackie. Next in the queue is Stanislav Jaracz from New Jersey Electric Vehicle Association.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Hi, Stan.
Hello. So my name is Stanislav Jaracz. The last name's G-A-R-A-C-Z. We'd like to thank for the opportunity to provide testimony. I am representing Electric Vehicle Association and more specifically, New Jersey Chapter of Electric Vehicle Association. I am providing testimony in support of ACC2. Why? Because New Jersey should really prioritize greenhouse emission lowering elimination. It should be top priority. And the reason why we need to adopt this rule because we are seeing in very clear recent history in New Jersey that we have worsening climate. This summer was the hottest globally. We are seeing extreme weather. We are seeing flooding, extreme heat, and also quality air related to forest fires, which is, of course, because we are dumping more and more carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. Six states have already adopted the rule. If anything, this rule is not coming to New Jersey premature. It is, if anything, it's actually late. For carmakers, they are actually also supporting the transition. Recently, Ford announced that they are going to adopt Tesla Charging Port, North American Charging Standard, because it helps Ford users to get more reliable charging on the road. So, and this was just the beginning. After Ford, it was General Motors, Rivian. And so the availability of charging on the go is only getting better. Speaking of burden in terms of cost of vehicles, that's not actually a problem today. According to an article released in last December, the average price of car, not just electric car, dipped, actually went over $50,000. Now, it is a little bit lower because the supply chain is better, but it's still close to $50,000. After incentives, the most affordable electric vehicle, Chevy Bolt, is actually $14,500 equivalent for gas car. Just to, you know, debunk someone's statement that this is electric cars are expensive. Also, the most affordable Model 3, Tesla Model 3 after incentives, is $23,385. So this is not a problem. Charging accessibility is maybe an issue, and it should not be construed as a barrier, but instead it should be understood as an opportunity for high-quality jobs. And our understanding is that the state, DEP, and BP are already having programs to bring charging to everyone, including disadvantaged communities. So also, gasoline cars are actually dirtier than the new ones. While electric vehicles, as they get older, they get cleaner because we deploy cleaner energy resources. And there are more and more of those as the state is deploying more solar and offshore wind. So we are in strong support of AAC, ACC Rule 2. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stan. Next up is Jerry Rivers. Jerry, are you on? Okay, we'll come back to Jerry. Next is Ayla Shermer from BikeJC. Okay, next up is Eric Benson. Okay, Holly Hops. Greg Gorman. Robin Rose Bennett. Patches McGarrow. Leon Paulsonell. Christian Noel from Food and Water Watch. Uchenna Bright from Environmental Entrepreneurs.
Yes, I'm here. Hi. Thank you so much. My name's Uchenna Bright. That's spelled U-C-H-E-N-N-A. Bright, B-R-I-G-H-T. I'm the Northeast Advocate for E2, which stands for Environmental Entrepreneurs. First, I want to thank New Jersey and the DEP for its continued leadership in combating the climate crisis and for continuing to put New Jersey in a strong position to reap the economic benefits of accelerated climate action. So I'm testifying on behalf of E2, which, like I said, stands for Environmental Entrepreneurs and our network of business leaders in New Jersey to urge the state to adopt the Advanced Clean Cars II standard this year in order to maximize the economic benefits as we transition to a clean economy. E2 is a national nonpartisan group of business leaders, investors, and other professionals from every sector of the economy who advocate for smart policies that are good for the economy and good for the environment. Nationally, we have over 11,000 members and supporters who have founded or funded more than 2,500 companies, created more than 600,000 jobs, and manage more than $100 billion in venture and private equity capital. Our network of business leaders sees the ACC2 standard as one that will drive investment, support local job growth, and facilitate cost savings in New Jersey by accelerating zero-emission-vehicle adoption across the state. If New Jersey adopts the rule this year, ACC2 will ensure an increasing number of zero-emission-vehicles will be available for sale to New Jersey customers, starting with model year 2027. When combined with historic levels of federal funding to build out the charging infrastructure, New Jersey has a clear and unprecedented opportunity to attract both the public and private investment needed to create the high-wage, very-naturally-local jobs that will be supporting the new, modern, clean transportation infrastructure of the future. In fact, New Jersey's clean-vehicle sector has already proven itself to be a strong economic driver. E2's most recent Clean Jobs Report, which we released last week, found that jobs in New Jersey's clean-vehicle sector grew by more than 15% in 2022, with close to 6,000 workers already employed. And with 85% of the world's car market committed to embracing 100% electrification within the next 20 years, the ACC2 standard can help New Jersey build and maintain the market leadership critical to continued job growth in this sector. In addition to creating jobs and stimulating local economic growth, the recent American Lung Association report that was also referenced earlier today showed that cleaner cars could have upwards of $43 billion in public health benefits for New Jersey residents. As the Garden State looks to maximize the wide-ranging economic benefits of ACC2, it is essential to act now and to move towards adoption before it is essential to act now and to move towards adoption before missing another compliance year. There will be people who say, "Slow down, wait, but we have nothing to gain from dragging our feet." The time to act is now. By adopting the standard this year, New Jersey residents will breathe easier, have more options for fighting the climate crisis, and will be given the potential choice of beginning to save money by avoiding the ever-rising, ever-volatile price of gasoline, which gas-powered cars rely on. And we can do all of this while supporting in-state economic growth. We urge you to continue leading the way in the Northeast by moving forward, forward with ACC2 this year. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Bill Barron. Bill, are you on? I know you were on earlier. Okay, Thomas Boylan.
Hi, good morning. My name is Thomas Boylan. It's T-H-O-M-A-S-B-O-Y-L-A-N. And I'm the Regulatory Director at Zero-Emission Transportation Association, or ZETA. ZETA is a coalition spanning the entire electric vehicle supply chain, including vehicle and battery manufacturers, charging companies, critical mineral developers, electric utilities, and many more. I want to first thank DEP for the opportunity to comment on its proposal to adopt Advanced Clean Cars 2. ZETA supports this action, and we believe this program is an important step towards decarbonizing the transportation sector. We believe the goals of ACC2 are achievable and will ensure the supply chain has the regulatory certainty needed to put the investments being made, to protect the investments being made today that will put the sector on a path toward the zero-emission future. As other commentators have mentioned, electrification will lead to significant emissions reductions and improve public health outcomes, but will also promote American economic competitiveness and create good-paying jobs here at home. Based on ZETA's own research, private sector investments in the domestic EV supply chain total over $200 billion and support nearly 400,000 American jobs. And thanks to the incentives in the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, industry is moving at unprecedented speed to scale the domestic EV supply chain at every stage of production. Industry confidence in electric vehicles is paralleled by public opinion. Surveys showed 71% of New Jersey voters aged 18 to 35 favor the phase-out of fossil fuel vehicles. What's more, a 2022 J.D. Power study showed that 96% of EV owners across the country say they will purchase another EV in the future. The main reason for this is the fact that consumers simply save money by driving an EV. Due to reduced fuel and maintenance costs, a typical driver can expect to save between $6,000 and $12,000 over the vehicle's lifetime just by switching to an electric version. Savings on fuel alone for drivers in New Jersey can range anywhere from $22 to $36 per fill-up, depending on the type of vehicle. New Jersey has an opportunity to lead in this space by implementing the Advanced Clean Cars 2 program and encourage good-paying jobs, reducing consumer costs, improving public health, and reducing emissions. We'll also send a strong signal across the EV supply chain that robust demand for electric automotive technologies is here to stay, laying the groundwork for further industry expansion. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to submitting written comments, expanding, and many more of these points.
Thank you, Thomas. Next in the queue is Dominique Luekenhoff from Hugo New. Hi, Dominique.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dominique Luekenhoff. That's spelled D-O-M-I-N-I-Q-U-E-L-U-E-C-K-E-N-H-O-F-F. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I serve as Senior Vice President for Corporate Affairs, Environment, Environment Health, Safety, and Sustainability for the Hugo New Corporation and Corny Point, our New Jersey commercial industrial business park in Corny, New Jersey. Previously, I also served as a career environmental regulatory official and scientist with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, with extensive experience in managing programs addressing land, water, and air. I thank this administration for acting swiftly on clean cars, but urge DEP to finalize these life-saving standards before the end of the year. I appear you, I appear before you today on behalf of our company, Hugo New, to express our strong support for the New Jersey Advanced Clean Cars 2 rules. As previously stated, these standards would provide certainty while requiring vehicle manufacturers to increase the production of zero-emission vehicles with the ultimate goal of achieving 100% zero-emission vehicles by 2035. As a New Jersey-based company founded on the principles of equitable economic, social, and environmental sustainability, driven by actions that benefit healthier jobs, businesses, and communities, Hugo New recognized that the future of passenger transport is electric. The number-one driver of greenhouse gas emissions nationally and regionally is transportation. 40% of greenhouse gas emissions in New Jersey in the tri-state region, most of these impacts coming from light-duty vehicles, medium- and heavy-duty trucks. And the New York, New Jersey, PA tri-state region has an annual GDP totaling over $2.7 trillion of goods and services. It's one of the most densely populated travel congested regions in the country. And in fact, we happen to reside there with our Corny Point facility. These standards are not only beneficial for the residents of New Jersey who live and work in the tri-state region, but also for unfortunate, overburdened communities adversely impacted by the greatest degree of exposure to these and other pollutant emissions. By transitioning to zero-emission vehicles, and more so without haste, we can significantly reduce harmful emissions, improve air quality, and mitigate the impacts of climate change. As a longstanding business owner, yes, over 70 years, Corny Point has been a consistent economic anchor and employment generator for Hudson County, the most densely populated county in the country. Hugo New can attest to the positive economic impact of this proposal. Embracing zero-emission vehicles will create new job opportunities, stimulate innovation, and attract investment in clean technologies. It will position New Jersey as a leader in the green economy and help us towards a sustainable future. Furthermore, these proposed standards align with our business values and goals at Hugo New and at Corny Point. In conclusion, adoption of New Jersey Advanced Clean Cars 2 would be a win-win for our state. It would benefit our residents, overburdened communities, and our environment while also driving economic growth and supporting businesses like ours. We thank Governor Murphy, and we urge you to please continue forward in this very positive initiative and adopt these rules. Thank you.
Thanks, Dominique. Matt Larkin from Compliance and Research Services. Matt Larkin. Okay, Melanie. Hi, Matt.
Okay, thank you. My name is Matt Larkin, M-A-T-T-L-A-R-K-I-N, with Compliance and Research Services in Plainfield, New Jersey. We have already heard plenty of comments discussing the current problems with New Jersey's poor air quality due to VOCs, NOx, and ozone. We want to offer an additional tool that NJDEP should adopt for use in both its SIP and its Transportation Implementation Plan, the TIP. The EPA recently rejected New Jersey's tip to reduce cross-border transport of pollutants to nearby states. The US DOT estimates that the average age of a car is 12 years. Currently, New Jersey has 6.7 million gasoline vehicles that will be on the road for the next several years. An older car has roughly five grams per mile of emissions for every one gram per mile that a car that is five years or newer has. Implementing a supplemental catalytic converter on these older vehicles can bring these cars down to more current emission standards. Catapass is an EPA-verified supplemental catalytic converter that has demonstrated CL and VOC reductions of 40% and NOx reductions of over 70% after 70,000 miles of use. Implementing a program of supplemental catalytic converters would be very similar to the existing DERA program for diesel trucks. That program requires EPA-verified technologies, and it allocates funds to implement the program. The emission reductions achieved by implementing Catapass have the potential to be captured and traded as emission reduction credits. In addition to existing SIP funding, the initial implementations of a supplemental catalytic converter program similar to DERA would be eligible for funding under the Inflation Reduction Clean Air Grant, Clean Air Grants. Catapass can help NJDEP to build a bridge from the older gasoline vehicles on the road today to the cleaner air that EVs will bring. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Melanie McDermott from Rutgers. Annie Hausman. Diane Schwartz. Oh, Annie, is that you? That just came on camera? Nope. Diane Schwartz. Leslie Bockel, New Jersey Working Families Party.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. My name is Leslie Bockel, L-E-S-L-I-E-B-O-C-K-O-L. I'm here on behalf of New Jersey Working Families Alliance. Our organization's priority is protecting the interests of the multiracial working class in this state. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of adopting ACC2. As rightfully proud as, as New Jersey is of its Parkway and its Turnpike and many other highways, we all know that road congestion causes more problems than just summer traffic jams on our way down the shore. New Jersey traffic also harms our air quality and our health, especially in communities that are nearest our major traffic corridors. Those areas, environmentally overburdened communities, are too often home to working class and poor families, often communities of color, who bear the brunt of pollution's health impact even as they have the least ability to relocate or access adequate healthcare. Now, for these families, adults and children alike, home isn't safe. Home isn't a place, home is a place that negatively impacts health because of automobile-related, fossil-fuel-related emissions. Home itself is an environmentally overburdened place that causes asthma, COPD, cardiovascular disease, and lung cancer, all of which, I know we all remember, make people more vulnerable to COVID, which preys especially on those with respiratory comorbidities. Now, the entire state of New Jersey fails to meet the federal air quality standards for ozone. And as a previous testifier mentioned, 13 out of 15 counties that were assessed in New Jersey received poor grades from the American Lung Association due to high ozone days. Now, our region ranks 12th worst out of 227 national metropolitan areas for its number of, of high ozone days, and it ranks 59th worst out of 223 areas for 24-hour particle pollution. The transportation sector, which we all acknowledge is crucial for New Jersey's economic prosperity, is the biggest emissions problem. The solution is ACC2, which will replace the fossil-fuel-reliant vehicles on our roads with better, cleaner alternatives, thereby reduce harmful co-pollutants like nitrogen oxide, sulfur oxides, particulate matter, and ground-level ozone concentrate. Now, I was born and raised in New Jersey, and I'm proud of my home state. But rankings like 12th worst, they don't make me proud, and they don't make me safe to live here and raise my children here. And I'm sure they don't make any of you feel proud or safe either. With air quality rankings like 12th worst, the people of our state can't afford to rank low on the list of states adopting policies like ACC2 that'll improve our air quality. But that's what we're doing, and we need to change that now before the end of 2023, so we don't miss out on another whole model year of car manufacturing. Now, in this part of the country, we're falling behind states like New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Maine, Maryland, Virginia, Vermont, and Washington, DC. They've all finalized or are on the way to finalizing ACC2 this year. Out West, Washington State and Oregon and California adopted it a year ago. They're on the right side of history, and we need to join them as leaders and policy setters and industry partners in this new forward-thinking world. And to do that, we have to hurry to catch up. We have to hurry to protect the next generation of kids growing up in New Jersey's environmentally overburdened communities and all over our state. And for that reason, Working Families urges Governor Murphy and NJDEP to fully adopt ACC2 as soon as possible, so we don't miss another whole year of progress. So thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Trish Riley from the Centrist Democrats of America.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to comment on this today. We really appreciate the opportunity. I'm a member, I'm a board member of the Centrist Democrats of America. CDA is a letterhead coalition that is dedicated to the principle that Democrats are most effective when they lead from the political center. I appreciate the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's attention on the Federal Clean Air State Implementation Plan and ACC2. While CDA believes that transition to green energy is important for New Jersey and our nation, this proposed vehicle mandate may not be the correct way to execute it. CDA believes that Democrats should be wary of banning gas vehicles before our EVs are affordable to working families and our nation's EV infrastructure. Primarily safe, reliable, and readily accessible charging is up to the task of allowing millions of people to charge their vehicles in rural and urban locations. With this in mind, and because New Jersey plans to ban the sale of new gas and diesel-powered vehicles in 2035, CDA conducted polling earlier this year in New Jersey on people's attitudes towards EVs. That polling is included in our submission to the DEP. Some of our key findings: A majority of New Jersey voters are very concerned about climate change and its effects. Democrats are most likely to be very concerned. But just 3% of New Jersey voters say limiting the number of gas vehicles sold in the state is the best approach to encouraging more EV usage. And only 3% of New Jersey voters say more funding or increasing the number of electric vehicles should be the top funding priority. As our nation struggles to manage the terrible impacts of climate change, we must ensure environmental policies are not financial burdens on working families. CDA encourages you to review your polling as you consider implementing this proposal. Thank you very much for, again, for the time to present these, these facts.
Thanks, Trish. Hey, we are up to Ginny Rock Bailey from Rock Bailey Enterprises. Ginny, are you on? Hi. Michael Karlovich from PBF Energy.
Thank you, Pam. I'm Michael Karlovich, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-K-A-R-L-O-V-I-C-H, representing PBF Energy, a merchant refiner headquartered in Parsippany, New Jersey. We are the largest refining company in terms of operating assets left in the Northeast, representing about 40% of remaining regional refining capacity. PBF subsidiaries operate a refinery and two product terminals in Paulsboro that supply the region with fuels, lubricants, and asphalt. When all our New Jersey assets are included, the company supports more than 600 jobs with as many as 1,000 additional workers brought in for major maintenance projects so that we can provide New Jersey with the products that help make modern life possible. We oppose Governor Murphy's proposal to adopt California's de facto ban on the sales of gasoline-powered cars, which would put our assets and employees and reliable fuel supply at long-term risk in the state. We think this plan is unattainable, noting that neither California nor New Jersey has conducted a study to determine whether this social experiment is achievable, including whether the majority of New Jersey residents will buy EVs. As you just heard from the Centrist Democrat of America representative, New Jerseyans reject the governor's mandate. An NJDEP representative reportedly said there were about 91,000 EVs registered in the state at the end of 2022, which amounts to about 6.3% of the state's registered cars. The other 93% of New Jersey motorists reject EVs or they'd be driving one. This attempt by the governor to force a centralized, state-controlled, command-and-control economy eliminates residents' choice of cars, effectively threatening affordable mobility for most New Jerseyans, especially those who can least afford an EV, as well as those who live in cities where charging is challenging. As an example of affordability, the starting price of a 2024 Rivian EV starts at $75,000, a luxury vehicle well above the average price of new cars and pickups or used vehicles. Although the refining industry has bounced back from the depths of COVID-related demand destruction of COVID-related demand destruction caused by government lockdowns during the pandemic, PBF shut down process units at the Paulsboro refinery that are still idle and laid off valued employees due to lack of demand and escalating regulatory costs, making the region even more reliant on fuel imports from countries with lower environmental and labor standards. This trend could continue if New Jersey advances its short-sighted gasoline-powered car ban. Advancing the governor's proposal would send market signals that could lead us to banning capital projects to avoid funding stranded assets rather than wait to see whether this aspirational social experiment, coupled with adverse market cycles, will prevent a reasonable return on investments. Banning the sale of gasoline-powered cars is only the latest extreme social policy launched in California, which has the highest fuel prices in the nation due to its mix of fuel taxes and fees. Nevertheless, gasoline demand and ice-vehicle miles traveled are up in California because its residents rely on their gasoline-powered vehicles for daily transportation, many preferring to use their second cars, EVs, to go limited distances. That is California. When so many New Jerseyans oppose Governor Murphy's mandate to force auto dealers to stop selling conventional vehicles, the state's residents are clearly rejecting the idea of being California East or Havana, Havana North, the capital of used cars. For the vast majority of New Jerseyans, EVs are unaffordable. They also reject the uncertainty, range anxiety, charging issues, and hidden costs associated with EVs. Yet the state plans to force residents to buy taxpayer-subsidized vehicles that are primarily purchased by the wealthy today. The ban could also threaten investments in cost-effective, future, low-carbon, or zero-carbon energy solutions because PBF is making significant investments in practical, cost-effective, low-carbon energy sources. We already built a renewable diesel plant in Louisiana that makes fuel indistinguishable from petroleum diesel that can be used in any diesel engine. We are also engaged with other interests in South Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Delaware in advancing a plan to develop a hydrogen hub for the region.
Michael, you're at time. Could you please wrap up?
Yes, thank you. The governor's plan could put the hydrogen investments we plan to make in South Jersey at risk because our sales of traditional fuels will partially fund them. This is one more reason why we oppose the state, and we will elaborate more on the topic in our written comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Virgil, Virgil Francis from Nuvo Energy. Joe DeFlora from the Fuel and Petrochemical Manufacturers.
Hi.
Hi, Joe.
Good morning. Thanks for letting me testify today. So, my name is Joseph DeFlora, J O S E P H, last name DeFlora, capital D E F L O R A, and I'm a Director of State and Local Outreach at the American Fuel and Petrochemical Manufacturers Association. AFPM represents the United States Refining and Petrochemical Industries. We currently, currently, the industry supports nearly 44,000 jobs in New Jersey and contributes nearly $11 billion to the state's GDP. At AFPM, we are committed to developing sound climate policies that take a balanced approach to our energy and economic security and environmental needs. AFPM supports efforts to reduce carbon emissions. However, by mandating the sale and use of electric vehicles, the state of New Jersey is failing to account for a significant source of carbon emissions from electric vehicles. All vehicles, regardless of powertrain, should be evaluated using a full lifecycle assessment, accounting for all emissions, including the emissions associated with the vehicle production, recharging or refueling, drivetrain or battery replacements, infrastructure modifications, and the end-of-life disposal and recycling of the vehicle. Liquid fuels and internal combustion engines have come a long way. According to the EPA, new cars, SUVs, pickups, and heavy-duty trucks and buses are roughly 99% cleaner compared to 1970 vehicle models. AFPM members are actively investing in biofuels and lower-carbon liquid fuels, which can now achieve as much as 86% greenhouse gas emission reductions as compared to traditional petroleum fuels. We believe consumers should be able to choose vehicles that meet their needs. Restricting consumer choice by eliminating competition is the wrong path to achieving a cleaner transportation system. Cost, range anxiety, grid reliability, and other factors make consumer acceptance of the EVs far from a foregone conclusion. The Advanced Clean Cars 2 proposal forces reliance on battery-electric vehicles, placing unnecessary risks on our energy and our economic security. The U.S. is now a net exporter of crude oil and petroleum products, and this position of energy security is one we haven't seen since 1949. China has a dominant position in the global supply chain for critical mineral extraction, processing, and battery production. New Jersey and other states adopting ACC2 are effectively trading away our hard-earned energy security and leaving our economy more dependent and financially beholden to countries that control the minerals required to manufacture EV batteries. We urge New Jersey to abandon an electric vehicle mandate that ignores the real emission impacts of EVs, limits the consumer choice, harms our energy security, and negatively impacts New Jersey communities. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Joe.
Wait, I have a minute left. Can I keep talking? I'm just kidding.
You can.
You guys, you guys are doing a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Amy Goldsmith.
Yes, hi. My name is Amy Goldsmith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Clean Water Action. We represent tens of thousands of New Jersey members. And for over 50 years, our organization works to achieve cleaner water, air, good jobs, and healthy communities. Clean Water Action played an instrumental role in the passage of the 2004 Clean Cars Act, which accelerated the sale of hybrid cars. At that time, that was the car innovation of the day, saving gas money for consumers, reducing air pollution and related illnesses. I bought a hybrid car back then, and I loved the fuel economy. You can see many, many more hybrid cars on the road now. Nearly 20 years later, Advanced Clean Car 2 will drive the sales, offering the next generation of car engineering going all-electric. Adopting this proposed rule now is essential to putting New Jersey on pace with over a dozen other states representing 40% of the car market with going electric by allowing New Jersey to enter the program with model year 2027. In doing so, we drive down climate emissions in significant ways, reduce health and community impacts, especially where vehicular traffic is concentrated and effects of multiple pollution sources are cumulative. In 2022, our family purchased a Chevy Bolt. We were able to take advantage of various programs and enabled us to buy a car at that time that we needed to replace a car that, you know, was gone, had to be retired. The benefits of going electric in a state congested with cars and stop-and-go traffic are exponential with the use of the regenerative braking system that electric vehicles provide, where you can gain back an average of 10% of your power every time you use your regenerative systems, and it reduces your charging needs at the plug. The European Union adopted a policy of 100% EV sales by 2035. General Motors has set a goal of 100% EV sales by 2035. The U.S. automakers are ramping up the number of EV models and pricing options. New Jersey can reach 100% EV sales as well. Without the adoption of ACC2 in New Jersey, electric cars will go to other neighboring ACCT states in the region and to other places around the world, rather than to our state, where our dealers have the option, you know, can provide those options for buying and have availability and sales. Given that roughly 35% of our climate pollutants are transportation-related, New Jersey will not be able to meet its mandated goals of 50% by 2030 for greenhouse gases, protect communities from accelerated climate impacts, and they're making fewer used electric cars available for the secondary market for people who cannot and do not want to buy new cars, but want cleaner air and no fuel costs in the future. ACCT alone will not solve the transportation needs of the future. Climate action imperative is tremendous, as we all know. But in tandem with ramping up electric vehicle sales, we must ensure that we are powering up with true green renewable energy at the grid and at the community level, not perpetuate the operation of fossil-fuel plants located in low-income communities of color. Communities have borne the burden that others benefit from this, from today and in the future. This is an injustice that must end. For this reasons and more, Clean Water Action urges the state to adopt Advanced Clean Car 2 by year end 2023 to ensure we make a timely transition to electric vehicles starting in model year 2027 and not miss another model year. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next is Kim Gaddy. Okay, we're going to go back to the top, and I'm going to call on people who had signed up but who were not responsive when I called their name. So, starting from the top, Andrea Marpolero Colamina from the Green Latinos. Andrea, are you on? Scott Fisher from Seal Power LLC. Jerry Rivers from the North American Climate Conservation and Environment. Ayala, A Y L A, Shermer from Bike JC. Eric Benson. Ollie Cox. Greg Gorman. Robin Rose Bennett. Hatches Magaro. Leon Pulsonel. Christian Noel from Food and Water Watch. Melanie McDermott from Rutgers. Annie Hausman. Diane Schwartz. Ginny Rock Bailey from Rock Bailey Enterprises. Virgil Francis from Nuvo Energy. Okay. We are at the list, at the end of the list for, yes?
Bill Barron.
Bill Barron, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Bill. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bill Barron, B E R N. I'm a resident of Montclair, New Jersey. I'm speaking today just as an individual on my own behalf. I've been involved with environmental issues since the mid-'60s. I've gone through a lot of these cycles of government mandates, if you will, ranging from pollution controls on power plants, on industrial facilities, emissions on cars, down to changing over our light bulbs from incandescent to LEDs. Every time industry comes in and claims that this is the end of the world, it's going to make everybody poorer. And instead, what we've seen repeatedly over time is that industries adapt, new technologies come online, and we learn to live with the changes, and we live longer because pollution has been reduced. And I think the same thing is the case with Advanced Clean Cars. You know, I'm encouraged that a lot of academics and other inventors are looking at ways to bring online new and more powerful batteries, to extend battery life, to replace lithium as the engine for the batteries. All of the objections that we've been hearing today are not going to last very long. It's clear that people like electric cars, everyone I've spoken to who owns one absolutely loves them. And the, we're about to, as reported in the Washington Post, we're about to hit a break in the curve of adoption, where traditionally all-new technologies, you know, have a slow startup, and then all of a sudden they reach a the transition point where rapid growth increases, and that's happening today with electric vehicles. The problem is, though, that while all the manufacturers, the car manufacturers, say they want to go electric in their ads and in their sales, they continue to promote high-end gas SUVs. So, the need for a mandate is, in fact, real. And it will help push the industry along. Yes, there will be market forces that encourage electric vehicles, but we need to continue to have government incentives, both positive in terms of cash rebates as well as sticks to go along with the carrots in the way of these requirements to meet minimum standards, a minimum amounts of electric vehicles sold in the state. So, I hope that, you know, the governor, the DEP adopts the regulations as written, the governor signs them, they're in place, and we can begin to transition that much faster. The, you know, the earth is in really bad shape right now. All this talk that we have until 2052 to clean it up, the greenhouse gases just doesn't make sense to me. We're, we're seeing 100-degree water off the coast of Florida. We're seeing forest fires, record temperatures in the south and southwest, even now in springtime, in fall time, I'm sorry. And, you know, I fear that we're at a point of no return. The ice caps are melting, you know, at the poles. We need to do whatever we can, as fast as we can, to stem climate change. I hope we're not too late, and these regulations need to go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We have one more person that registered, Zach Fabish.
Hi, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Zach Fabish, Z A C K F A B I S H. I am an attorney, which I, which I often apologize about, but I'm here representing Sierra Club, the nation's oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization, and it's 700,000 members across the country. And in particular, it's 18,000 or more than 18,000 members in New Jersey. Um, so we've heard a bunch of testimony today, including some testimony from a few people opposing Advanced Clean Cars 2. I want to address a couple of the points that I heard some of them make. One was on this issue, sort of like finger-wagging about Advanced Clean Cars 2 being a mandate and that being a bad thing. I'd like to point out that this is the automotive sector, and safety standards, efficiency standards, emission standards are nothing new regarding vehicles, and there's certainly nothing bad. Think about seatbelts, airbags, catalytic converters, requirements to stop putting lead in gasoline. All of these things were criticized at the time as being mandates and interferences with the market. But the end result of all of this has been a cleaner and safer and much higher-quality vehicle fleet available to U.S. consumers. And we all enjoy the benefits of that, and Advanced Clean Cars 2 is no, is categorically nothing different from those sort of prior attempts to improve vehicles that we all drive. On the question of consumer choice, I don't particularly want to get into the question of whether or not it's a very good or legitimate choice to continue poisoning the air and torching the climate. But I will say that consumer purchases in a marketplace are not the only way that our society makes big important decisions, such as how we're going to confront public health crises, how we're going to confront a climate crisis. And for what it's worth, you know, my personal consumer choice and one that I think is held by many of the people who testified here today, as well as millions of people across this country and in New Jersey. I would like to live in a future with less NOx and PM pollution. I would like to live in a future with less smog. And I would certainly like to live in a future in which we have responsibly addressed the climate crisis in a way that years from now, when we tell our children or grandchildren about it, we can do so with a sense and feeling of pride instead of one of shame. Third point I'd like to make is just that the US actually lags far behind the rest of the world in electric vehicle sales. Twenty twenty-three isn't over yet, but the projections are about one in five new vehicles across planet Earth will be, new vehicles sold across planet Earth are electric vehicles. That figure for the United States is about one in 10. Now, New Jersey does better than the nation as a whole, and New Jersey should feel proud about that. But the reality is that the United States lags behind the rest of the world. And I'd like to think of myself as a patriot, and I don't like it when my country isn't living up to global standards in terms of adopting cleaner, safer, better vehicle technology. So I would just like to repeat what others have said here today and thank D P for moving forward with advanced clean cars too, and urge the agency and the governor to move forward as quickly as possible in finalizing the regulation. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. And I'm told that Andrea from Green Latinos just logged on. Andrea, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So my name is Andrea Marpolero Colamina, and I'm the Sustainable Communities Program Director at Green Latinos. Green Latinos is a community of environmental and conservation champions who fight against climate change and environmental degradation that intensifies systemic social health and economic injustices in our community. We all know that vehicle emissions make us sick and kill us. Nationwide, Latinos experience disproportionate exposure to fine particulate matter emissions, leading to high rates of asthma lung disease, heart disease, and other pollution triggered conditions, which can be fatal. Nearly one-third of Latino children nationwide live in counties where hazardous air pollutant concentrations exceed a one in 10,000 cancer risk level. On a daily basis in New Jersey, residents are breathing in dangerous amounts of tailpipe pollution, including two, nearly 2 million Latino people, high numbers of whom are situated near the Turnpike, Garden State Parkway, and other major transportation hubs. For too long, communities of color in particular have been overburdened with exposure to tailpipe pollution, which can cause or worsen lung disease, asthma, and even cancer. In particular, the New York Newark metropolitan area currently ranks 12th highest for ozone days in the country, and counties like Bergen, Mercer, Camden, and Middlesex were graded with F and D for high ozone days. Advancing the ACC2 standards this year will help provide critical relief to New Jerseyans suffering daily from dirty air and health impacts caused by transportation pollution. Cars, trucks, and buses are a primary source of New Jersey's most dangerous air pollutants, wreaking havoc on our health and environment. By adapting the ACC2 program, New Jersey can make deep cuts in harmful transportation pollution that will save lives and make our households, businesses, economy, and economy less dependent on dirty, volatile, and costly gasoline that damages our climate. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Andrea. Okay, now we're going to give people who have not pre-registered an opportunity to speak. So if you have not pre-registered to testify today and would like to present comments, please raise your hand by pressing the hand icon on your screen if you are on a computer or mobile device, and I will call on you in the order that your hand is raised. Again, please do not use the chat box to provide comments. So I will pause for a moment now for you to raise your hands if you'd like to speak. Okay, let's go to those of you that are calling in by phone. If you are calling in by phone and wish to present comments, unmute yourself by pressing pound six. Looks like we have a few people calling in by phone. Do either any of them want to provide comments? Okay, I see a hand raised. Simon from New Jersey DOT.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Simon Wachuku. S I M O N N W A C H U A W U. Session Chief, New Jersey DOT. Speaking on my behalf, I, as I said, I thank you for organizing this public hearing. We are currently working on carbon reduction strategies and Navy, natural electric vehicle infrastructure. I believe this will help, will go a long way to help us address some of the issue we have. I have heard what many have said today, and we check and see how this can be added on what we are doing. And I know we are still thinking the implication of B A, B A, which is Build America and Buy America. The impact is gonna happen on our carbon reduction strategy. With what I've had today, I've done some spot check from some people about the implication of electric vehicle. About 50% of the people I talked to still waiting to hear the success of EV in terms of reliability, easy to charge, the vehicle, availability, and low cost. Luckily, there are some incentives for people who want to buy EV vehicle. So I'm thinking that we need to address some of the issues some people have on EV. That's why we have various programs for charging stations, which we call the Alternative Fair Corridors. We are trying and we will try to see how these corridors will be available for those who have the EV vehicles. This will go a long way to reduce our carbon emission, our greenhouse emissions, gas emission. So I'm suggesting that we will try to look for various programs and education is very important. It's the key to allow people to think in that direction on how to purchase electric vehicle. And this is what I have for now. Thank you, Simon.
Thank you, Simon. I see Eric Blomgren has his hand raised. Go ahead, Eric.
B L O M G R E N, from the New Jersey Gasoline Convenience Store and Automotive Association. Well-written comments, but I just wanted to jump in real quick with a few points. We're a nonprofit trade association. We represent mostly small businesses across the state since 1937. We've either supported or not opposed a wide variety of policies at the state and federal level that incentivize electric vehicles. And we're continuing to work to make it easier for our members to install EV fast chargers. But we do have to draw the line and oppose a full-scale ban on all new passenger vehicles powered by traditional motor fuels. We just think it's fundamentally unfair to completely outlaw the sale of vehicles that more than 92% of new car consumers are continuing to choose for a wide variety of reasons. Any transition to more EVs or exclusively EVs should be made through the choice of the motoring public, and all involvement by the state should be by offering positive incentives. If an EV is always better in every circumstance for the motorist, then there shouldn't be a need for a ban. There's a wide variety of questions that I think still need to be answered before we move forward with this rule. Will it increase the, well, we know it'll increase demand for electricity in the state, but what kinds of upgrades is the grid going to need? Can they be constructed fast enough to meet that new demand? Can the state generate enough electricity to meet that new demand entirely with zero emission sources while also bringing online so much new clean energy that it replaces all existing natural gas usage, while also bringing on so much new clean energy that it covers the increase in demand from the building electrification program? If all of our cars are going to be powered by electricity generated by natural gas, what's the point? And how much are ratepayer rates going to be increased to pay for it all? And what's the impact on the used car market? For a lot of motorists, the only transportation that they have access to is an affordable used car. If they want to stay with the existing fleet of gas-powered cars, those prices are only going to get more expensive as the supply drops and the cost of maintenance increases over time. They want to use the EV, they may not be able to afford it because if the battery needs to get replaced after six or eight or nine years, and the average lifespan of a car is 12 to 15 years, the cost of a new battery is $25,000 right there, not to mention the cost of the tires and the computers and all the rest of the car. So they may be effectively excluded from any kind of car ownership and the freedom of mobility that comes from being a motorist. And what happens to the Transportation Trust Fund, which is funded by excise taxes on motor fuel? Are we going to have one development, one department of the state that's subsidizing electric vehicles, while another them is charging them a special tax? How long can EV subsidies for new cars continue in the state? At what level, at what cost? Are we still going to be providing incentives when EVs are 20% of new car sales, 50%, 100%? What's that going to cost the state annually? And what's the impact of this regulation on small businesses? Most gas stations in New Jersey are small businesses, and the majority are still operated by someone who only operates that single location. Some are multi-generational family businesses. Others have been the path to the American dream for immigrants from all over the world. You know, if a huge portion of EV charging is going to be done at home, are we just replacing independent small businesses and transferring that wealth from them to big utility companies? So we recommend that the D P not adopt the ACC2 regulation, and we'll have more written comments, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Eric. And just a reminder, for those of you that did not pre-register, we need your email addresses, please. So that would be Simon, Eric, and then Jeanette. I'm going to call on you next. If you could make sure you provide Monica Miranda with your email address, that would be great. Go ahead, Jeanette. Peg, you're on mute. Sorry, Jeanette, you're up. It looks like you're unmuted, so go ahead and speak. Okay, we can come back to Jeanette. It's been almost an hour and a half since we last had a break, so why don't we take another five-minute break? It's 12:17. We'll come back at 12:22. And anyone else interested in testifying can do so then. So five-minute break, it's 12:17. We'll come back at 12:22. Thank you. Okay, we are back. There was a hand raised just before the break, someone named Jeanette. Jeanette, are you still on? And if so, would you like to provide comments? Is there anyone else that would like to provide comments that's on virtually via Microsoft Teams or calling in by phone? Hi, Jeanette. Would you like to provide comments? Jeanette, if you can hear us, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and provide comments. It looks like you're still muted. Oh, there we go. Try it now. Okay, so you're unmuted on our end. I think you are, you need to unmute yourself on your end. Jeanette, are you able to unmute yourself? We cannot hear you. Monica, can you manually, there we go. We can't hear you. Going to give it another few seconds. Okay, Jeanette, it looks like you are having technical difficulties. I'm sorry about that. It appears now that everyone that had wanted to comment has done so. It is 12:27 PM and it does not appear that there is anyone remaining who is interested in commenting at this hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and formally close the hearing. Thank you all for the participation. Again, for the purposes of this stenographer, it's 12:27 PM. Thank you so much.